I would like to reconvene the meeting and call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of January 7th, 2020. It seems so funny to say 2020. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
City Attorney, Mr. Watson, could you please give the closed session report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to the item for conference with legal counsel related to liability claims pursuant to Government Code's Section 5495-6.95 with the claimant being Michael Sawyer, the counsel voted unanimously to accept the settlement proposal as drafted.
Thank you. Our first order of business is proclamation, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am so excited to be able to present this proclamation for the Santa Maria Women's March. The Women's March will take place on Saturday, January 18th, 2020. Yeah, like I said, I'm really excited. It's a great opportunity for all of us to be able to come together and march for what we believe in. Me in particular, I know that I will be marching for the Equal Rights Amendment. For those of you that don't know, this is something that began with Alice Paul in the 1920s. And still to this day, almost 100 years later, women still have no equal rights protections under the federal government, no matter how high in power a woman, no matter how much power a woman holds in government. And so, that's what I will be marching for on Saturday, the 18th. So, with that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas the mission of the Women's March of Santa Maria Valley is to promote and celebrate the empowerment of all women in their communities, and whereas the vision of the Women's March of Santa Maria Valley is to strive to protect all human rights, protect the safety and health of all people through nonviolent means, work to unify the diverse peoples in the community, recognize that transformative changes are driven by grassroots actions and political activism, and whereas their unified principles are to work to create a just and accessible society in which all women are free and able to care for their families in a nonviolent, safe, healthy, and economically fair environment. And whereas every major city will be standing in solidarity on January 18th, 2020, to advocate for the rights of women, people of color, those who are disabled, immigrants, the LGBTQ+ community, and ensuring healthcare, education, and justice for all. Now, therefore, the Mayor, Alice Patino, hereby recognizes January 18th, 2020, as Women's March of Santa Maria Valley Day in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents and businesses to support the efforts of the Women's March here in Santa Maria. And to accept the proclamation is Adi McDonald-Funes and Jules Neal.
Hi, my name is Julianne Neal from the Women's March of Santa Maria Valley, and we would like to thank the Mayor and all the City Council members for supporting our vision of striving to protect women's rights and all human rights. We are especially pleased to have both Mayor Patino and Councilwoman Soto speaking at the March this year. We hope the rest of the council will join us on January 18th as well. The Women's March of Santa Maria Valley works to protect the safety and health of all people and to unify the diverse voices in our community in order to move toward a positive and just future for all. Our theme this year is "Because You Refuse to Be Silenced." We recognize that transformative changes are driven by grassroots action and political activism. On January 18th, every major city will be standing in solidarity to speak about and around these issues of women's rights, reproductive rights, civil rights, human rights, disability rights, immigrant rights, LGBTQ+ individuals, healthcare, education, criminal justice, and environmental justice. Santa Maria is the largest city in the Santa Barbara County, and it is not always feasible for many of our residents who are marginalized, low-income, and do not have transportation and/or the financial means to travel outside of our community to get to the Women's Marches held in San Luis Obispo or Santa Barbara. The Women's March of Santa Maria Valley recognizes that we need to bring together our diverse ethnicities, communities, and voices to work together to create change and inclusion right here in Santa Maria. On January 18th, our Women's March will promote and celebrate the empowerment of all women in the Santa Maria Valley. And may I remind you, there will not be true inclusion, freedom, and peace without real equity for all. We invite everyone to join us on January 18th at 10:00 a.m. at Menami Park for a community gathering and then march with us on our short one-mile route. Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es Adi McDonald aquí con el comité de la marcha de las mujeres a Santa María Valley, y nos gustaría agradecer a la alcaldesa y a todos los miembros del Consejo Municipal por apoyar nuestra visión de luchar por proteger los derechos de las mujeres y todos los derechos humanos. Nos complace especialmente que la alcaldesa Patino y conseja Soto hablaron en la marcha este año. Esperemos que el resto del consejo nos podrán acompañar el 18 de enero. La marcha de las mujeres del Valle de Santa María trabaja para proteger la seguridad y la salud de todas las personas y unificar las diversas voces de nuestra comunidad para avanzar hacia un futuro positivo y justo para todos. Nuestro tema este año es porque negamos hacer silenciados. Reconocemos que los cambios transformados son impulsados por acciones de base y activismo político. El 18 de enero, todas las ciudades importantes se solidarán para hablar sobre el cuidado de salud, educación, justicia penal, y la justicia ambiental. Además, los derechos de las mujeres, los derechos reproductivos, los derechos civiles, los derechos humanos, los derechos de discapacidad, los derechos de los inmigrantes, y los derechos de las personas LGBTQ+ y más. Santa María es la ciudad más grande del condado de Santa Barbara, y no siempre es fácil o aún posible para muchos de nuestros residentes marginados, de bajos ingresos, y que no tienen transporte y/o los medios financieros para viajar fuera de nuestra comunidad para llegar a otras marchas. Nuestra marcha de las mujeres reconoce la necesidad de reunir a nuestras diversas etnias, comunidades, y voces para trabajar juntas y crear cambios e inclusión aquí mismo en Santa María. El 18 de enero, nuestra marcha de las mujeres promoverá y celebrará el empoderamiento de todas las mujeres en el Valle de Santa María. Y debo recordarles que no habrá verdadera inclusión, libertad, y paz sin una verdadera equidad para todos. Invitamos a todos a unirse a nosotros el 18 de enero a las 10:00 a.m. en Menami Park para una reunión comunitaria, y luego marchar con nosotros en la corta ruta de una milla. Gracias.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the Mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Directions of staff may be given, however state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them. And Madam Mayor, we have one request.
Right. Thank you. Sarah McDonald?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council and staff. Happy New Year. I'm gonna, hopefully, I'm gonna be with you all here as your observer from the League of Women Voters, and I'm here to observe your meeting for a little while. I have another commitment. So, I'm so excited to have this opportunity to observe and learn. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the comment, the public comment portion of the agenda. Mr. Stillwell, do you have any comments to make? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? None? Okay.
If not, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider repealing former Chapter 9-3, Article 5600, and replacing and renumbering a new Chapter 613 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code relating to explosives and fireworks.
Thank you. So, staff report is to be made by Fire Chief Champion?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Tonight before you, we have basically a bookkeeping issue. We're gonna clean up the language in which the fireworks ordinance resides in Chapter 6 of the municipal code, and it is more fitting to be moved into Chapter 9 of the Public Safety and Welfare Chapter. And so, what this does is it puts the fireworks language and ordinance in with other ordinances that deal with offenses against public peace, public disturbances, and discharging of weapons. So, the language in which the fireworks are, the way that exists today, they're not changing anything about that. All it is, is just a bookkeeping and relocation of where the fireworks are located within the municipal code.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Ms. Waterfield?
I don't know if I've misunderstood you, Chief Champion, but we're taking it out of Chapters 9 and putting it into Section 6.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. I thought I heard it the other way.
Did I misspeak? Yes, it's 9, from Chapter 9 into Chapter 6.
Fantastic.
That's correct.
And that's all that's just being changed, where there's not a lottery, there's no kind of those things going on.
Nope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of Chief Champion?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, staff received one written communication from Thomas Williams asking that should a lottery system be established, nonprofit organizations already operating fireworks booths be grandfathered in? And we have three requests to speak.
Okay. Thank you. So, I have Greg Orozco, followed by Paul Berry, followed by Peggy Thomasio.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Miss Patino and Board of Members, City Council, thank you very much for taking my time. Chief Chapman, I also want to thank you for the holding off for one year. TNT would like to just thank you for that, for not going to the lottery yet. TNT is willing to help out any way we can to help out with wording or so on to help make this transition easy. I know that there's, it's been talked about 36 booths being applied or allowed. I know that's quite a bit for this small town. If we can transition gradually, TNT is just excited in regards to the holding off on the lottery at this time. We have our, some of the booth members or the club members that are here, they've spent a lot of time. One night, we went almost five hours until we talked. But thank you guys for this opportunity, and like I said, we would like to help TNT transition into a few of their efforts, or further efforts for the future. And I believe even with speaking for the other organization that provides fireworks into the community, they're also probably the same way, as we feel too. So, thank you all for your guys' consideration.
Thank you. Paul Berry?
Last summer, our youth group went on a mission trip to Israel almost exclusively because of our fireworks booth. It's been a great joy for us as a church to be able to have, as a nonprofit, that booth to make the money to make certain missions trips possible. And when my associate pastor came back to church, and he'd been to the meeting, and he told me that a whole new scheme had come up, and there was the possibility that we would no longer have a booth, I thought, well, you know, I've been a pastor here for 29 years, and first 15 of those, we didn't have a booth because we were waiting for, you know, someone to give up their license, and now that we have one, and the possibility of certain youth-type missions, projects not being possible, it's stirring to us. And so, I just ask, on the behalf of our church, and perhaps on behalf of the kids that enjoyed so much going to Israel for two weeks last summer, that there would continue to be, as you so well said, this gradual movement into Santa Maria nonprofits being able to utilize the locations that we have. And I know, I don't believe there are 36 different booths as there is, and I think that would greatly diminish each of the booths that are existing, the amount that they would be able to make. So, my two cents, thank you very much.
Thank you. Peggy Thomasio?
Good evening. Happy New Year. There's been a lot of discussion over this. I want to thank you and the Fire Department for giving it so much homework, so much investment. You're the caretakers of our community, and I would like all of us to consider something that maybe we haven't thought of in this process, is that Santa Maria and Orchid are so connected, and in the last 20 years, we've seen the Santa Maria boundaries grow and get bigger, and at some point, those boundaries are gonna push into Orchid. We're gonna take on more and more of that Orchid area, and that's something that we should build into the fireworks for our future, and not to lose some of those stands in that interim process, because we may lose them. And then 10 years down the road, we may have those nonprofits in the city limits, and they will have lost 10 years of a firework booth. So, we're, all of us that are holding booths are very blessed. It's a wonderful firework opportunity. Many cities don't have it, the county doesn't have it, and we do thank you for looking out for the city with the Fire Department. It's a big job on the Fourth of July, we know that. We hear the sirens running everywhere, and you've got your handfuls with all the illegals. So, we'd like to really take the time to make the process. We thank you for putting it off for another year, and hopefully those of us with churches will put it in God's hands and say, if we get a booth, then we're blessed; if we're not, it's somebody else's turn. You might consider a three-year lottery, so that each group that has it has the time to get used to having a booth. It's a learning curve when you have one. If, when you do it, it's a learning curve to have staffing, to have the supplies you need, to get used to the location, and so that's something to consider when you're doing that whole lottery process. Maybe more than one year would be good for some of the booths, but thank you for hearing all of our input and concerns.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring this back to the council for discussion or an emotion?
I don't have anything else to say, and if no one else does, I prepare to make a motion that we accept the, wherever we were here, that the Chapter 9-3, Article 5600 had be replaced and renumbering as Chapter 6-13 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code relating to explosives, fireworks that was put together by a fire chief.
Thank you. Yeah. Is there a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next item is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Recreation and Parks Commission to adopt the 2019 Leisure Needs Assessment and Action Plan.
Okay, the staff report is to be made by Recreation and Parks Director, Mr. Posada.
I'll have to adjust the microphone, the chief is a little bit taller than I am. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. Tonight, I bring before you the 2019 Leisure Needs Assessment. What the Leisure Needs Assessment is, is a snapshot in time of where the functions, operations, facilities of the Recreation and Parks Department are in the eyes of the community. The idea of the assessment is to go out, survey the community, find out what they feel about our current service levels, and then to tell us what they think the priorities for our service level should be down the road. This report was assembled by a company called Green Play. They are a company nationwide that surveys, does these kinds of surveys for Recreation and Parks Departments and federal agencies, as well as state agencies. So, the goal of the plan is to accurately estimate what unmet needs we have in the city. So, if you had an opportunity to look through the report, there were key factors that they brought up. Recreation Services Manager, Dennis Smith, on the other side, has up on the screen the community input process that we used. There were focus groups, there were stakeholder interviews, there were site and facility tours, meetings with the staff of the department to kind of get an internal feel of where we are. There was a needs assessment survey done. There were 3,800 mailed-out surveys that were sent to residents, which we received about a 7%, a little bit more than 7%, 7.9 response rate, which is pretty good. Typically, the response rates range between 7% and 10% on a mail-out survey. But more importantly for us, what we tried to do is do these open surveys where we were out looking for people to answer questions. In our intercept surveys, we did a number of them at the Open Streets event, where we had a pretty good representation of our community out there. I'll go ahead and change that, Dennis. The key things and issues that were identified in the study were barriers to fees, barriers such as fees in infrastructure. One of the things that we have, we found in the study, which was an important fact for us to know, is that we collect about 12% of our cost of operations through user fees, and that's a pretty low number. And one of the things that we will be doing as part of the city's fee study that's being conducted with the Finance Department, is to kind of look at that number and see if there's a better way to recover some of our expenses through fee adjustments. Excuse me. The other area that we found was that there was some residents who had limited information about what we offer in programs and services, so that tells us that we need to do a better job reaching out to the community. One of the things that we heard in the document was that our current Recreation Guide, which some of you receive at home, that the new format is something that the public wasn't real thrilled with, so that we need to maybe look at maybe going back to our prior format, which gave a lot more information. So, that is good information for us to use. The fact that our facilities, you know, around the community are driving time kinds of facilities, there's a study in here where they look at how close our facilities to our population centers around the city, and that's based on national trends, and I know I've heard from the council in the past that national trends really aren't significant for us, but we do want to compare ourselves to what's out there in the field of Recreation and Parks across the country. Continuation of program offerings that anticipate the community's mix of interests. So, what that is telling us is that there, we have a diverse community, we have a diverse community of interests, and it's important for us as a department to perhaps not be the individuals that provide those services, but to make sure that we are aware that there's an interest in those services, and then who do we partner with to provide those services to the community. Mentioned about the update, the fee structure. The last time we had, and I will say a very modest fee structure discussion, was in 2015. And again, leveraging key partnership opportunities. We just had a great one yesterday with the Safe Places launch over at the youth center, where we're partnering with Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley and NOAA's Anchorage in Santa Barbara to provide a venue for troubled youth to be able to get services. So, again, part of the discussion. I'm gonna have to go to the book here, because I can't read that far away. So, let me see here. What were the findings in the report? Some of the things that we found out was, questions that were asked was familiarity with parks and recreation programs and services. The residents are somewhat familiar with the facilities that the City of Santa Maria provides. Somewhat is, you know, that's, that's not the great place. We would like to be in a spot where the community tells us, oh yes, we know about them, and you know, we know that they're great services. Uses of parks and facilities, the most widely used facilities provided to residents were Waller Park, which is actually a county park, but again, it services all our residents in North County. Prescott Park and Rotary Centennial Park, 90% of those surveyed visited Waller Park at least once a year, and that's good to know. That's good information for us to share with the county staff and give some ideas of what our usage is. Satisfaction with adequacy of park facilities, the respondents were generally satisfied with our Recreation and Parks facilities, programs, and services. Satisfaction with facilities is slightly higher than satisfaction with programs and services. So, again, that kind of tells us that, you know, maybe our programs and service end, you know, need a little bit better servicing. Important needs met, parks, playgrounds, recreation programs are all seen as important and serving the community well. That's a good statement for us. It tells us that we are doing a good job out in the community. There are definite strengths, but there are some opportunities, and that's, again, what this study is to show us what those opportunities are. For example, trails and pathways, and to a lesser extent, the swimming pools are rated highly in terms of importance, but low in the case of needs being met. So, when we look in the future, when we look at developing park facilities or renovating parks, another example of that is Oakley Park. One of the things that we did there is we incorporated a walking trail around the perimeter of the park, because that was important to the residents in that neighborhood. So, wherever we can get this kind of input, when we look at projects where there's an opportunity to perhaps build some internal city trail system, working with public works on the multi-purpose trail system that we have, and giving people the opportunity to walk, the public is telling us that's important to us. Areas would, areas that would increase use, factories that would most increase use in recreation park facilities are providing more lighting, and more amenities, and more restrooms. So, some of the council members will remember that we recently brought forward and are currently working on with staff on a plan with PJD and the Southland Corporation to look at the feasibility of bringing more lighting to our facilities. So, again, that's what the public is telling us, and coincidentally, we happen to be working on that same end. The city has had a plan as far as restrooms go to, with prior council approval, was to place a restroom at every park in the city, and I believe we're about 90% there. there. Years prior, that was not the case. It has taken us quite a while to get to that point, probably a good 15 years, but we do have those facilities in our parks now. Number six finding was, was desired amenities. Most desired amenities to be improved in Santa Maria over the next five to 10 years are trails, pathways, community neighborhood parks, and athletic fields. Again, the athletic fields is something that the council has heard consistently over the last few years, and staff has been working on that as, as a goal. The other thing that this helps us with is when a new development occurs, that this helps us identify in our park designs, maybe as a new neighborhood goes in and we're working with those, with those developers, that we know that the public is telling us, we want to see more trails included in that design. So it helps us kind of just plan the road. Communication, communication is somewhat effective. Twenty-three percent of the respondents feel that communication about recreation facilities, services, and programs is, is not effective. That's not a good number, and that's something for us that we need to improve on. It's important for us to, to take that seriously, since those are our customers, and, and it's important for us to give them the services that they would like to have, and to let them know what those services are. Among respondents, under 35, communication effectiveness was lower than 47 percent, rating the effectiveness as, as a one or a two. One of the things that we strive for is trying to figure out what's the best medium to get out to our population. We've been very strong on the social media side of things over the last few years, really focusing on that. We have a younger demographic in Santa Maria, so it's, that's kind of the way people communicate, trying to get out on social media. But it also is telling us that that's not the only thing we should be doing, and like I mentioned earlier, the Rec Guide. Please.
Yeah, the communication situation, you know, I read that it's not great through the city, but no matter what socioeconomic you're in, everybody has a cellphone. And so I would assume maybe email attached to that, they're, they're getting information. How, how do we, is it the gap that we don't know who's out there that doesn't have one? Or, I mean, everybody has cellphones.
So, Dennis, do you want to answer that one? Dennis handles most of our social media kind of things.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Marketing is quite a challenge, and there's so many rules and restrictions on blasting emails and getting that out there. By, by sending an unsolicited email, it, it could get us in trouble. So we're looking for the right way to market to our audience effectively and efficiently, and having a good value at the same time. So, right now, radio advertising is the most popular in Santa Maria, as most, most of our population is listening to radio at some point throughout the day, whether it's in their car ride, or at work, or even on their, on their phone at work. We're also looking into expanding into more digital marketing for our younger staff, and even some of those of us that are older, you know, using podcasts and video blogs, and really working with our local media to look at different resources that we have available here in Santa Maria.
So, the problem with emails, is it, is it for municipalities that have certain rules other than other companies? Because I get emails that I don't solicit to, and it offers unsubscribe, and so you just unsubscribe to them, so.
In, in general, it's, it's, you are not allowed to email someone from a business soliciting a product or a program that generates some sort of revenue without permission. We all do get spam mail, and we're aware of that, but that's not something we would do normally.
But we're not generating anything for money, we're just generating information to let them know what, you know, the programs are going on for youth, and for senior citizens, and for the whole thing. It's not come and, you know, pay this and pay that, just informational.
Sure, it's advertising in general. So what we've done this year, we're really excited, I was working with a local media company to where, for example, teens has been a real big push force. If a teen goes into a certain demographic, sorry, a certain geographic area, and they pull up a web browser on their phone, it's gonna show them an advertisement for the youth center, specific to that teen population. As to where if I pull up a browser on my phone, it's not gonna show that, because I'm not that demographic. So we're just looking at alternatives to marketing to, to better suit a specific demographic for our, for our programs. For example, seniors, you know, we're not going to market to them to visit the youth center, it would be the senior center. So it's just being more specific and on purpose with our marketing dollars.
Can I, I'd like to speak to that. I know that Ms. Rayburn used to do, I don't know if it was monthly or every couple of weeks, on KUHL, and I don't know if she did KSMA, but I think that on the Spanish-speaking radio stations, we should be doing that, you know, every couple of weeks, maybe twice a month on what we offer. Because a lot of them listen to the radio, and especially, I'm talking about parents who have got young children, because with social media, we're not gonna be able to market to that nine or 10-year-old, I don't think, but, so that they know what's going on. And especially when we do the Safe and Strong during the summer for the young kids, the parents need to know that they can take their kids there, so.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. We work pretty closely with our local radio media, KSMA, Ben Hayes, all those guys, and we visit quite frequently, and Ms. Tree's a lot. The weekly radio show was on the air for three years, to let the public know about what all the programming we're doing, and we're continuing to work with all of our media sources.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Posada, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Number eight was the methods of receiving, of receiving information, social media, and email will be effective way to reach our younger people, which we mentioned. The majority of respondents, 94 percent, prefer communications in English, which was kind of enlightening to us to one, one extent. But again, we have to take that comment with the fact that what we know versus what the respondent said, and I think that's something that we need to, to, to study and figure out ways, as you were mentioning, going out to the Hispanic radio stations, going out to the Hispanic media, the press, television, and, and continuing our outreach efforts That's where I think surveying information, we have to kind of take it and apply it to what we know of Santa Maria.
Can you repeat, can you repeat what you said before? Take what we know versus the, the results of the survey, what you said before that?
Sure, so what, so ninety, if they say 94 percent of the people that they surveyed, which is a statistically valid number of Santa Maria residents, prefer their information in English, we have to take that, we have to take that, and then we also have to analyze it ourselves and digest it, and say, okay, that might be true of the survey respondents, but we know the demographic that we're working with. We know, we hear from other members of the community what, how our radio station, our Hispanic radio stations and media wouldn't be as successful as they are if there wasn't a market for it. So, that's what I'm saying, I mean by that. Number nine, the value and vision. It's important for Santa Maria to focus on ensuring current, currently available facilities are clean and well-maintained, and that provide a high level of safety and security. A lesser important item to focus on is providing transportation options to facilities. So, our staff certainly takes pride in the facilities that they're out there, and the goal is always to keep them clean and, and, you know, top-notch as far as we can do. And that's possible, again, because of certain things that we've been able to do over the years, based on past Leisure Needs Assessment. One of them was the park renovations that we've gone through, and that the council and the CDVG committee have been very supportive of taking those older facilities, bringing them up to snuff the current levels of service, and dedicating those dollars to that, to that upkeep. When, when we develop new parks, there's a mechanism for funding those new parks through developer fees. When we try to look at old parks, it's much more difficult to figure out a way to fund those. So CDVG has really been a lifesaver to those kinds of projects. And again, from a staff perspective, when you work in a park, and you go there every day, and you pick up the trash, and you take care of it for the residents, it's so much better to have new facilities or improved facilities for you to, as an employee, to clean up or pick up, and you take extra pride in those facilities, because they are new, and they are improved for, for the neighborhood and the community that we serve. So that's an important factor on our morale side for, for our staff. And again, I want to thank the council for supporting those kinds of projects. Fee increases, something that we never like to talk about, but it is a recommendation, and that is that, that we need to look at the potential of increasing fees. In this particular statement, it says, while 30 percent would not be impacted at all by a fee increase, fee increases would disproportionately impact those that rent their residences and households and earn less than $50,000 a year. And if you look through the study, you'll find that our median household income is less than $50,000 a year, I think it's at 49. So, those again, are things that we need to, on policy matters, we need to look at our fee structures and our charges for facilities, and bring those back to you all for input and after we, after we, you know, vet, vet them with the Recreation and Parks Commission, so that we can get an idea of, of what, what is the tolerance level for fees, where is it that we would like to be. It's a balancing act, is probably the only way to describe it. We, we know, we've been offering for years through, through the People for Leisure and Youth, our nonprofit arm, scholarships for individuals who can't afford to take a class or pay for swim lessons, you know, and, and those have been helpful for us. But in the long run, like I said, a 12 percent recovery on our investment for our overall department operating budget is, it's slim, you know. So, that's something that, that we'll be talking to you about in, in the future. There's so much information in here, and I hope that at minimum, you had an opportunity to thumb through the pages. I don't want to take any more detailed time on this. I do have Commissioner Chair, Commissioner Chair Rebecca Carey here, and Commissioner Laura Henderson here, and if they had anything they would like to add, they certainly can come up to the podium, and thank you.
Good evening, thank you. I think that Ms. Posada was very thorough in kind of explaining to you this assessment and, and what it does for the City of Santa Maria. On the commission side of it, I think that it's an important document that we're excited to bring forward to you and have you read through for a few different reasons. First is the wealth of information that's in it, and so I'm going to have to disagree with Mr. Posada, you can't really thumb through it. I think that you really do have to sit down and read it and tab it, and then read it again, because there is so much information in here, and I, I don't think that there's another document that exists in the city that has as comprehensive information as this does. So, I appreciate the information that's included in it for that reason, and also because it provides a really good snapshot of many different factors in the city. So, the travel sheds that were spoken about earlier, on our families, how they're getting to and from work, what mode of transportation they're using, what line of work some of our families are in, that kind of thing. But then on the commission side for us, this is a really important document, because it helps guide our work, and so when projects come up, we can be responsive to the, the public based on the assessment, and make decisions to, to, to bring forward to you based on, on this assessment. So, this is actually the second Leisure Needs Assessment that I've been through. The last document, the 2013 assessment, was very important in guiding a lot of the decisions that we made, and so this is a tool that we will use to make decisions and inform what the public wants. And then the second reason that I think that it's so important is, it's not just a bunch of out-of-town researchers coming in and telling us about our city. Of course, they, they were able to comb through the information and gather it in a really nice and easy-to-read document, but it also allowed the opportunity to, for folks to come forward and give their opinion. So we had multiple opportunities for the public to come out, organizations, developers, all walks of life were invited to a lot of these meetings to give their input, and we did have a good turnout, and we heard about the interests and the needs from their perspective. So, I think that, that, that's important for us, so that we are as responsive as possible. I think that the staff at Recreation and Parks does a great job, but they're also cognizant that they can't know everything, that, that experience is, is a lot, but we need outsiders to come in and kind of really help us combine all that information and, and give us a tool that can help move us forward. So, excited to bring this forward to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carey, was there anything you'd wish to add to that?
You know, everything's been covered. Laura did an excellent job on representing the commission, but the one thing I would like to say, I was saying this to Mayor Patino yesterday, we had a, the commission had a retreat in December, and we had a, an outside person came, and he was our facilitator, and he was so impressed with our commission, well, actually with our city, he had read the Leisure Needs Assessment, and he was literally blown away by it. Through the entire day, he kept saying, you guys do this, you guys, you know, and what I mentioned, Mayor Patino, was he was impressed that we don't allow smoking in our parks, among other things, but he was just, he said, so many towns and cities in California haven't even gotten there yet, and you guys have this beautiful array of parks, and they're all in amazing condition. So, what I just would like to say is, thank you to our Recreation and Parks Commission, or, excuse me, Department. But mostly, we just have this wonderful asset in our community, and I just, I'm, I'm sure everyone realizes it, but it's, it's due to Alex, and Dennis, and, and the Department, and I just want to make sure everyone notices.
Thank you. Ms. Posada?
Mayor, in closing, thank you very much, and thank commissioners for their comments. I want to close just by saying what this is not. This is not any kind of concrete document. This is an informational document for us, and I do realize, as you read through it, there are, on the recommendations, they, they, they use words like implement and other ones, and in reality, it's, from staff's perspective, the idea behind this document is, it is an evaluation of where we are as a community. It is not, this is what we're gonna do from now on. I think what we learned in our last Leisure Assessments is that these are good for about two or three years, and then after the third year, they start to get a little old, demographics change, I'm waiting for the census to tell us how many people we really have. So it's, I guess I'd like to say it's a fluid document to some extent, it's fluid input into where Rec and Parks will be going over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Posada? Ms. Waterfield?
I just wanted to thank you for clarifying that there's no motion to be made to approve this document at all whatsoever, that it's just only informational purposes, that we can just file on that. And I, looking through this, and then remembering the meeting we had on the arts, it's kind of, it doesn't correlate with what you've put in here, and you do have arts being throughout, throughout this plan. Interesting, Green Play and their studies, the key issues, the top priorities, and other suggestions, art was not mentioned in any of these. But when I go through here, and I see where art is done, and I believe what the council decided to do was adopt the plan, but not the funding.
Correct.
And so that funding, in my understanding, in my opinion, would be, you would, that funding would hire a person if you so chose to hire through that, through that funding. And so when I read, hire one full-time employee to oversee the implementation of public arts master plan, I don't like that, because it just insinuates that we're gonna hire, the city is gonna hire somebody. And then on another page, the department should consider dedicating one full-time staff person to overseeing the implementation of the public arts master plan. We need to make it clear that this money will not come from general fund, or any city fund at all whatsoever. It needs to come from the fundraising purposes that are gonna be created through however they choose to create to fund the arts program. So I just wanted to clarify that in, to you, just to let you understand, that was my thinking when we approved the plan, but not the funding.
Thank you, Councilmember Waterfield, and, and that was a direction, I wouldn't say the direction, but the consensus that we received as staff, I can believe Councilmember Cordero talked about implement, or partner- talked about implement, or partnering with other nonprofits or creating a new nonprofit specifically for that purpose, and that's kind of the way we see the plan evolving. There may be a full-time person hired somewhere down the road with those kinds of dollars, either via a grant or some other thing like that.
With those funds.
And so those are the things that we're looking at. So we totally take your input from the last meeting. Now, in regards to what's in the document, this document was actually done before your last meeting.
That was my next question.
So the consultant was pretty much working off the draft plan, and I think they actually called it a draft plan. And the other document that they used was the downtown, the downtown streetscape plan that was developed, that's kind of, they're kind of using that for synergy as to where they want to go. So we fully understand that, and that's definitely not the, not the direction that we're going to take.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Posada, Dr. Moats?
Mr. Posada, thank you for your presentation. I just had a question and then a comment. On page 40 of this document, you talk about the possibility of obtaining 15 acres at Union Valley for use as athletic fields. Where would that be? And is that property we already own?
Thank you, Councilmember Moats. So we've been approached by the Santa Maria Aquatics Center Program, or the Orchid Aquatics Program, that got that property donated to them, and there's been some discussion. Commissioner Lee, who's on the Parks Commission now, was past president of that organization. We worked with Lori in discussions of if there's some potential use for the city to do that. I believe that's the acres that's being referred to in here. Is it expanding? Oh, I'm sorry. So if it's expanding Pioneer Park, then we're looking at another negotiations that we're doing with the Airport District, which are other, two other land use options down in the southern portion of the city. So, yeah, there's some potential, I guess, for that.
And my comment is that in my business, I deal with an age demographic where people are 50 or 60 years old, and they're giving up tennis and racquetball and handball, and there's a tremendous interest in pickleball.
Yes.
And I've been asked by multiple people why we don't have dedicated pickleball courts in Santa Maria. I guess there's one available across from the Boys and Girls Club, but it has to be broken down, and I get lots of complaints that the tennis court where they set up the pickleball courts is being used by soccer players.
Yes.
So it would be very much to my liking if we could have dedicated pickleball courts somewhere.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moats. And we are talking with a pickleball group. They're a very vocal group, and we actually have, they've been great partners. They do set up their own courts at Atkinson Park. They set up, I believe it's four courts. They want to expand to six. We're looking at other locations for potentially locating some pickleball courts. We do, the other thing you identified was the problem with people using the tennis courts as soccer for what they call five-on-five or four-on-four soccer, and that is a problem that we're, the Rangers and the staff are dealing with. But we are aware of pickleball, and we're certainly working with the group to try to come up with a site where they can have a home field, per se. They ran a fundraiser November-ish, somewhere around there, and they raised $5,000 or $6,000 and donated that to the department to expand our availability of services. We're working with them right now on creating some indoor space during the rainy season at one of the centers. Again, they will have to tear down and set up, but at least they'll be able to play even during poor weather.
Good.
Mr. Cordero, did you have any questions to Mr. Posada at all? Okay.
No, we spoke off the meeting here, so I'm up to do.
Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence?
We received one email from Lori Tamora, who indicated that the leisure report didn't mention capital budget and AB 1600 fees and how the developers are a big part of city park development, and she requests that the council delay approving this without more analysis of the AB 1600 program.
And do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we do, and also in her email request, she asked to present a few slides to the council.
Okay. Oh, that's the only one?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Tamora?
Good evening. I'm Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts and have worked with the city for 32 years on a number of these programs. And I really appreciate the presentation that was made by Alex, and I feel like the document is sort of bipolar because it is a snapshot in time, but it also has a full discussion of what's going to happen over the next 20 years. And the provisions and the statistics and the information in here does not reflect what's happening with Community Development Department, with the update of the general plan, and it also does not reflect what's happening with the AB 1600 fees. So I think you only got a snippet of what's happening for the next 20 years, and the numbers that are in here are not correct. And so I'm going to just show you a couple of slides from AB 1600, and this particular slide is what the developers are paying right now. You go all the way to the farthest quarter, and right now, per house, at 1,500 square feet, they're paying about $4,000, and it's, it goes incrementally up per square foot. So a 2,500-square-foot house would pay $6,000. Every house in the city of Santa Maria pays an AB 1600 fee. Every commercial building, every industrial building pays fees. And the way the AB 1600 fee program was developed, it's a total of about $50 million that have been coming into the city of Santa Maria over the last 20-plus years, and it's extrapolated forward for future development. And the concern that I have with this document is that they say that the city only has 250 acres of parks. Well, that's not true. The city has about 350 acres of parks and probably a whole lot more if you add Los Flores Canyon. And the reason I bring Los Flores into this is because Los Flores is part of the AB 1600 fee program. So this analysis, which says that the city is short on parks, is not true. The city has more parks than most communities in the Central Coast. This report does not address Enos Park and the proposals for the fields and the amenities at Enos Park, and it also does not address some of the other parks that are part of the AB 1600 fee, but they're not in this plan. So I think it gives a misrepresentation of what is already been planned for in the city. Acuist Apache coming forward with Area 5, it's in the AB 1600 fees. The developers are going to pay for it, but it's not acknowledged in here. What I would like, if this is going to be moved forward and be used as a policy document, the whole discussion about future planning, which starts on page 25, should be taken out of the plan, just taken out, and have that embedded in the general plan update that we are going through right now. The general plan update includes circulation, which is trails and parks, or trails and bike ways. It also includes open space and parks in the different sections, and it's collaborated and partnered with the development projects that are coming forward. Also, just to make clear, we're still updating the AB 1600 fees. We just got an email an hour before this meeting started from David Baez that we have another working meeting on January 16th at 3:00 at Shepherd Hall to go over this fee program. This is the city's fee program, and there is not one word in this document about what the developers do. There's not one word in here about meeting with development community. I talked to five developers, I talked to the design community, and I said, "Did anybody know that this was happening?" And they all said, "No." So if this is a snapshot in time, that's fine. I think there is a lot of good information in here, but it extrapolates that information and makes it a policy document that's going to be used against the development community to increase the developer fees, and that affects affordable housing, that affects what's going to happen with businesses and industrial, and we need to have all of the pieces, all the policy documents that the city uses woven together. And I feel that there are sections in this document that overreached and should be taken out and not, particularly, when I saw the resolution being part of this, that's why I'm here tonight. I don't think that this should be endorsed by the city council unless Alex and his team come back to the development community and let's comb through this one more time so that the AB 1600 fees, this document, are reflective of, there's a boatload of money in the AB 1600 fees that goes to parks, and it's not mentioned once in here. So I feel that there was a tactical error in this document, specifically because they did not talk about Los Flores Canyon, which, according to that list right there, there's about $2.5 to $3 million of AB 1600 fees going out to Los Flores Canyon, and it's not reflected in here. And it's a great project. Don't blame Alex. I mean, it's a great project, but you've got to tell the whole story. So please do not adopt this tonight. Direct staff to go back and work with the development community. We are a very important part of this city, and we get ignored. So I just want to ask the city to hold up this report until some more work is done, and especially with Community Development Department as part of it, because this is going to be a big deal for the city over the next 30 years, and we need to all be working together, not in our own little silos, making decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Tamora.
Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield?
My question is to staff, to Jason. Does the city, do city projects pay AB 1600 fees? They don't. Okay. So that's $2.5 million that's not included in the 1600 that we acquire. Did you, were you aware of that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
That city, city capital jobs do not pay 16, AB 1600 dollar fees. So you had mentioned that it was $2.5 million, Los Flores, but those, those won't be counted for.
Well, on that list up there, on that AB 1600 fee, the developers are paying into the fund for the improvements out at Los Flores Canyon.
That's what I wanted to know.
Under that DF category, if you look at that line item, all of those funds are coming in from developer fees allocating to improvements at Los Flores Canyon. I'm sorry, Los Flores, I keep saying Los Flores Canyon. But, so I think we just need to work together and get some of the facts in so that we're all looking at the big picture at the same time with collaboration rather than isolation.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Soto?
My question's to staff. Mr. Posada, is there a reason why Los Flores Ranch was not included in the leisure needs assessment?
Thank you, Councilmember Soto. What is included in these is, again, we typically look at those parks that are within the city's immediate sphere, so that's what you're looking at. You're looking at those, as you saw in there, there was the distance from a neighborhood to their neighborhood park, from a home, and that's really what the focus is. And when we look at negative parkland numbers, it's typically based within what's in the city's immediate footprint. Los Flores is certainly one of those areas that we could include. Then we would perhaps tip the scale in the other direction to where we're negative, we're positive parkland, and therefore, when new development happens or our new neighborhood gets built, then perhaps we wouldn't get a park in that area because we have positive park numbers. So it's a very, again, it's a very difficult thing to scale.
Thank you. I think that's what Lori's talking about, where you have to work with the development community on this, because the tilting is going to be unfair to somebody on this. And so we've got that Acuist Apache, whole development coming in, and sure, there's a park in there, the whole thing. And then when you include Los Flores, it completely takes it out, but that's where you just have to collaborate with both and try to understand. And Lori, you're shaking your head saying no in regards to, I don't know what that means.
The city adopted a general plan back in 1993, and we've been following that plan all the way through. You adopted the AB 1600 fees so that those parks could be built with each one of these projects. When you added Los Flores into the AB 1600 fees, it is a city asset that the developers paid for, and even though it is outside of town, it should be part of this needs assessment because we're paying for this. The development community's money is going to Los Flores. And that's why I said this, this snapshot in time description that Alex gave is true. If that's what this document is, then fine, but unfortunately, it also extrapolates out and it misrepresents what the development community does for this city. And so I wish that the whole section on what happens from 20 to 2035 get removed out of this document, because the general plan is going to be much more valuable in the future than this needs assessment, the way it's described in this document. And that's why I would like to have this referred back, give the development community time to work with Dennis and Alex, and let's make sure that it reflects the real world.
Thank you. Dr. Moats?
A question to Ms. Tamora. So for each new house that's built, it's 1,500 square feet, an AB 1600 fee of $4,000 is assessed to the developer. Of the $4,000, how is it apportioned? How much goes to the development of parks, and what are other things that can be done with the AB 1600 fees?
Well, remember that the AB 1600 fee program ends up being about $35,000 for the city of Santa Maria. Money goes to the police department, you know, fire, water, sewer, and the Parks Department gets $4,000. It all goes to the Parks Department. So what normally happens is the developer dedicates the land, and Alex and his team designs the park with the money that they get from AB 1600 fees. So it's a partnership, and that's why I feel that this document didn't reflect the partnership that has successfully been going on for over 25 years. Those parks just didn't happen. It was part of development and part of the development community, and those people that live in those neighborhoods are benefiting from this, these parks. And so I think we just need to be more respectful of that partnership.
So, Ms. Tamora, then, if a developer's creating a really nice subdivision, not only do they have to dedicate land to the city, but in addition to that, they pay $4,000 per 1,500-square-foot house for the AB 1600 fees?
It depends on the negotiations. Some of the land is sometimes compensated by that fee program. Again, depends on the negotiations, and so, but at the same time, the developer's bringing in the roads, water, sewer, you know, all the electrical, the infrastructure's coming to that site. You know, Enos Ranch is a great example. There's a park sitting there, and all of the infrastructure's in right now, and we're working on the design for the project. So the developer did that. They didn't get reimbursed for bringing in all the infrastructure, and they negotiated different assets of the property for different elements of the parks, but all of the developers paid for it. Easton, you know, Costco, Lowe's, everybody paid into the funds. The auto dealerships are paying their fees. So this is a partnership.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Waterfield?
So you're talking about a 1,500-square-foot home for $4,000 plus. What if, what if it's a 2,500-square-foot home?
It's about $6,000.
Okay, so it goes up.
It's by square foot.
Okay.
Yeah, so $3,000 is $8,000.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the comments made by Ms. Tamora, but I think that, going back to the leisure needs assessment and why it's in front of us, this is a needs assessment. This is shining light on... This is shining light on where we are currently, the needs of the city currently, and the projections of where we're going to be in the next five, 10 years. This is not something that, as was mentioned, this is, this is going to be an assessment that's going to help us do our work, help the plan, the Recreation and Parks Commission do their work. And ultimately, you know, I understand Los Flores Ranch being brought into the picture, but again, when you're looking at the travel sheds and seeing that we have, we have residents and we have residents that are unable to walk to a park within 10 miles and that that number is only, that percentage of folks who can will only decrease. I think that, again, a needs assessment, a needs assessment is just what it's called. It's a needs assessment. It's a, it's a snapshot of where we are. It's a projection of the future. It doesn't necessarily mean that this is the direction that the city needs to move into. That's why we have budget planning and budget processes. And I, again, I appreciate the information about the AB 1600 program, but I think that ultimately, this is just allowing us to get a real life snapshot of where we are right now, where we're going. And I know that the general plan update is only going to help reinforce that and to have, allow us to have more of a holistic view. But this is what's currently in front of us. I mean, we spent $70,000 on this needs assessment for what, for us not to be able to adopt it, just in adopting it meaning, yes, we see it, we read it, thank you for the work. And let's, let's, let's see, let's see how we can, let's use this to build our work around it. Yeah, I just, I don't understand, I just don't understand the, I'll just leave it at that.
Any other comments? Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Posada, this, this appears to me to be a program that we're putting together and presenting in blocks, if you will. We're giving this section and this part and this part, and we're building up to developing into something. There's going to, a park's going to come, or two or three are going to come out of this assessment as the future goes on. Is there a point in time where the documentation is used to, the documentation adds issues like, like Los Flores or Enos or those that are yet currently not mentioned? I can see why we're not mentioning some of them because they're not completed, they're, they're in limbo, there's, you can't walk and do anything at Enos Park, I mean, excuse me, at, over in Enos Ranch right now. There's no park there for that, for people to use. But, so I can see that. And I can see the point where you can't, you can't just say, let's run down to the park and plan on the equipment there when it comes to the Los Flores Ranch. Is there a point in time where all of the information that Ms. Tamora is mentioning, because I'll tell you, I lost sleep over it, trying to figure, are we, are we hiding something here? What are we doing here? Do you anticipate that in the future as months and years go by, do we say, now it's time to add all of this information in?
Well, I think, I understand where you're coming from in that there's, there's 1,779 acres of land out at, at Los Flores. And the Utilities Department is working frantically to get their landfill project, you know, laid out and finalized. So until that's really set, Los Flores is kind of there, kind of accessible to the public, you know, with its, we're open for business, so to speak. But again, the problem is getting to that location. I agree totally with, with Ms. Tamora when she talks about the partnership because we have been able to do that. So as development happens in the city, that comes to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission, you know, gathers information from staff on both in Utilities, Public Works, Planning, Community Development, and Rec and Parks. And we sit there and we look at it and we say, okay, is there a place for a park in this community, in this development? Is there a requirement? You brought, I think the mayor brought up the Aquist Apache location. So in that area, there's 19 acres set aside for, hopefully, it'll end up being, you know, a sports complex. So that's in the plan and we have worked with, with the development community on that end. Any future development that happens in the next 20 to 30 years will probably evolve the same way, where there'll be a plan submitted, a design that the Planning Commission will gather all the information on and approve, and then, you know, we'll have our components as far as Rec and Parks goes for that new neighborhood that's being created. I don't have a problem, you know, working with the development community on those kinds of issues. I think that one of the things the council might just want to consider is, is look at the document and say, okay, you know, this looks like an okay snapshot in time for a plan for Rec and Parks and the commission to kind of move forward on. The word adoption, I think, is kind of scaring people off to some extent. It really is that the Rec and Parks Commission made a recommendation and you're basically saying, yeah, we, we agree with that, that recommendation, that, you know, this, this is a plan that the department can use to, you know, roll out its program over the next couple of years. It is not intended, I think in the demographics and the information that Ms. Tamora was talking about, is intended to kind of reach way out there. And I agree, and Mr. Ng has been asked about what the impacts of this on the, on the general plan. And I think that the general plan certainly is going to be a, like a 10,000-foot overview of where the city is going to be going. It kind of lays out generalities. And the leisure assessment is really, I guess you could look at it more as our work plan. You know, this is what we're going to be working on. And that's kind of where I think I'd like to leave that.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah. Mr. Posada, I get the feeling that there's kind of two schools of thought about what the city council should do with this. One is to accept it as informational and the other is to approve the recommendations in the report. How would you analyze that and what are your thoughts on that?
I think that's very astute of you, Councilmember Moats. I think that that's exactly where we are. You can adopt it for informational purposes. The council's looked at it. And like I said, you don't have any major objections to it. It could be adopted that way with, and even a caveat could be made that, you know, we sit down with the developers and we talk about, you know, the future of that plan. That's, from a staff perspective, that's not an issue. I think I mentioned in my report is that I don't see it as you adopting the recommendations. The recommendations are really to staff and from our perspective, we'll see which ones make sense. I believe in the resolution, it actually makes comment that, that something to the effect that insofar as possible, you know, we're going to, staff is going to work with the city manager's office to, to, yes, to be, and community partners to roll out the plan. So it's really, that's, that's really what it is. It's, it's, again, it's, it's a work plan for us is really what it is.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify exactly what the ask is for the legal perspective, if you may. The, the ask under item two of the resolution is, is that the Director of Recs and Parks is hereby authorized and directed to work with the city manager in an attempt to implement the suggestions and recommendations as set forth. And it also asks the council simply to approve and put on file the document. So there is no adoption. It is not direction from council to implement every item, but rather it has the city council's review, it's put on file for the community, and that there is direction to staff to attempt to implement it. That's the only legal basis of the document. I just want to be clear on that.
So we're not adopting a resolution at all on this?
You're adopting a resol, if you adopt the resolution, that is the legal import of what the resolution says, is that you are approving the document as written and putting it on file in that you are authorizing the city manager, the director of Rec and Park, and community partners to attempt to implement it.
Well, see, that's, that's where my problem is. Because if you're going to spend $70,000 on a document, on an assessment, and you don't assess everything in the city, but you mention 15 acres at Union Valley, which is a possibility, but leave out 1,780 acres, it doesn't make bloody sense to me. And so, you know, I don't like the arts part of it. I don't like that we need to hire a person with that. It's informational only. This is information that we need to seek and look at so that Parks and Recs understand what we're doing. I don't, adopting the resolution, I just, I just would just like to say, let's file and put away or do whatever.
You know, excuse me, Ms. Soto. You know, I'm, I'm going to, I, I appreciate the information here because I think it's really good.
Absolutely.
And I think it's really good for us to understand the demographics as well as the, the age population we have here in the city of Santa Maria because our, our programs need, needs that information. I think where I'm having a problem is, is that right now, we're in the middle of a, of a general plan update and, and this, this to me is part of it, you know? And then we have to balance what we know because you can't just, well, you could hop on your bike and go out to Los Flores, but when we think of parks, we think of community parks. We have parts of our city where we do not have parks that are close to, and that's just the reality of it, okay? And, and the older parts of the city. And so in the newer parts, we have the parks in the, in the, in the neighborhoods and that's great. So we have to deal with what we have, not what we would like to have. We did vote on the plan for the public art, but certainly not to have someone, one of our employees running it as it states in here. And I think maybe that's where some of it has gone. I don't have the, I don't have a problem to receive and file this. And I think it's, it's a good direction on, on how we need to go and, and for our, our Parks Commissioners. I think that's great. And at the same time, here we have another wrinkle with the AB 1600 funds, fees, because we have the governor saying that maybe we need to lower those, that they're too high because, which now goes into our housing. We know we need more housing in Santa Maria. We need workforce housing. We need low income housing. So it really, it, it takes community development and it takes everything that we're working together. And so it has to be integrated, sort of like a puzzle. You're putting all the pieces together to make the whole puzzle work. So, and that's, that's where my problem is. I don't have a problem if we receive and file this and we work in that direction. But I don't want us to come up at budget times and say, oh yeah, well, we approved that and said this person, we're going to hire this person. No, I don't, that's not what we decided to do at the last meeting. So if we receive and file this, this is fine. But I'm not saying approve it. And that's, that is, that is my position. Ms. Soto?
Thank you. Again, going back to, I mean, this is a needs assessment. This is telling us where we're at now, what the gaps are that we have currently in our city and what future, projections of future gaps will be. And you're right, Mayor Patino, we do have lots of pockets in the cities, particularly in the north part of town, where a lot of folks don't have parks accessible to them. They can't walk to a park. They have to get in their car and drive. And so, you know, the way that I see it, this is, again, this is telling us what the gaps are, what the future gaps will be, and giving us a recommendation of how we can fill these gaps in an ideal world. We are the ones that ultimately have a say on the budget. And if we don't have the income, we don't have to go forward with the recommendations of the needs assessment. It's just a recommendation and all we're saying is, by us adopting the resolution, is that we heard the recommendations and we're filing them and we're going to work towards having, providing our residents the best services possible. I mean, it's about the level of service that we're going to be providing them with Recreation and Parks. I mean, that is one of our departments and it is part of our city. And the stuff, the, the things that are noted in the needs assessment, like public art, trails, you know, opens, more open space, these are all things that came directly from the community. These were things that our, our residents, our voters were asking for. I understand that we may not necessarily agree with public art or whatever, you know, whatever it may be, we may not agree necessarily with, with what was included as a recommendation. But I think that ultimately, keeping in mind that these, the information that's here, it's here because of the surveys that were conducted by the resident, conducted and the input that we received from the residents of Santa Maria. And again, our job is to strive for the best and providing the best quality of life and the best level of service to all of our residents. And if we have the means and the financial means to do so, let's do it. If we don't, then we don't. But this is just us saying, we read the document and we, we will, I mean, I, I hope we can, I mean, we should be striving to providing the best level of service to our residents. It doesn't mean that we are binding ourselves permanently by adopting it.
Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
Alex, you, you had said the intention for the Parks and Recs Commission was just to inform city council, not to make any, any, any recommendations in regards to it. And so I, you know, and I will just reiterate what you said in an email to a person when we were talking about this whole thing. And it says, you wrote, "It is important to note there is no city council action on the leisure needs assessment. The RP Commission is presenting this document for city council information, review, and file. There is, there are no ordinances to be adopted."
Correct.
And that came straight, that came straight from you. So that's where we are, just to receive and file.
And it continues to be that way.
Yeah, just to receive and file.
Madam Mayor, I want to clarify because of what's on the agenda. And so on the agenda is, for the council's consideration, a resolution to, as the, as the city attorney said, to authorize that we, that the community partners implement the suggestions. There's no legal reason that you can't just receive and file. And then, you're right, as Mr. Posada said, there is no ordinance you're adopting. So you can adopt a resolution to adopt the plan, you can adopt a resolution to implement the plan, or you can just receive and file a report. It's really whatever Moats seems you'd like to make.
Then I would make a motion to receive and file from direction of Alex Posada.
Okay.
You're assuming that we're all done talking?
No, I've just made a motion. No one's seconding it yet.
Are we looking for a second?
Yeah, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Oh, Mr. Cordero.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I see this document slightly different than, than I think Ms. Tamora does. I see this document as a direction that we would like to be able to go. But I don't see the document as a specific design plan for anything or the lack of anything. And, and it kind of sounds like maybe, please correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, but it sounds like we in the development community are being cut out of this and we're not being recognized. And I don't know that that's the plan here. I think the plan is just to give us a direction. We want to go this way and provide these kinds of services. There's nothing that's trying to, I didn't take this initially when I read it, that we're, we're not recognizing all of the parties involved. I'm sure that in every program we pass, there's somebody that didn't get their handshaked. So I'm, I'm, I'm not unhappy with it, but I think that, that the development community has done a great job here tonight in trying to let everybody know that, that they're a big part of this. And I, I don't have any issues with that either, but it's a, it's a direction, not a design. That's my feeling. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes. And I, and I think, I think we're all saying that here and differently, and we feel differently. I, I just feel like, I personally just don't want to be boxed into something and someone come back and say, you know, you voted for this, you've approved it. Because I've had that happen to me before. And I think this, as Ms. Soto said, this is a direction. These are goals that we want to attain. to attain. And maybe we, individually, we don't want to attain all of them, but we know that we've heard from people out in the community, we've heard from the survey. And, but I, I think the development community doesn't feel they necessarily have been heard, because they're the ones that are, it's gonna cost them money to put in, and eventual, and evidently, we also are going to be faced with a higher cost for that development and a higher cost for that house. So it affects all the community in everything that we do, if there is that domino effect. And so I think that's probably much, I think that's what everyone is saying, just not, it's a good direction, yeah, we agree with all of this, it sounds great, we just don't want to be boxed in. And, and as Alex said, it's only gonna last us for two or three years, and who knows what's gonna happen there. Let me ask you something else, though, Alex. When you talk about the, the land that is, we're talking, that might be available, now you're not talking about the, the land off of Union Valley Parkway where the Aqua Center was gonna go?
Originally, I thought that's where you were headed, because that was a discussion that we had.
I thought, I thought it was too, yeah.
Yes, but apparently.
Because that's not, that's not in the city.
Correct, correct. One of the, the area is the, adjacent to Pioneer Park, it's the south acreage between Union Valley Parkway and Foster Road. The airport district has expressed a little bit of interest about talking about that acreage as its retention right now, Stonewater retention.
Okay. And that, that'll take a lot of conversation, because I don't know what the FFA allows as far as parks go, to be in the flight plan or anything, too. So that's gonna take some discussion, and may not even come to fruition. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
Mr. Watson, can you please?
Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Watson, can you please clarify what the motion has, what the motion?
My understanding is the motion is to receive and file the document, so.
And how is that different from the recommendation?
It does not have a resolution attached, and does not direct staff to cooperate and implement.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? Okay.
I cannot approve a needs assessment.
Okay, Ms. Soto, can you wait? Yes.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Thank you. The next item will be a report by our city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two items of note. One is this Wednesday on January tenth at ten AM at the Santa Maria Airport. The airport has called a media announcement, a press gathering to announce new flight service out of the airport.
Excuse me, did you say Wednesday?
Friday.
Okay, that's, yeah, I mean, it's Friday.
I was just checking.
No, thank you for that. Yeah, Friday, the January tenth, ten AM, at the airport. And they're gonna, they'll have a media announcement, we encourage people to tune in or to attend that meeting at ten AM this Friday. And again, they'll be announcing the air service and additional services at the airport in the upcoming months, that we are excited to be able to have them announce. And then the next meeting of the city council is January twenty-first. And a few items of note. One is we are bringing forward recognition, commendations for the non-profit groups that work on our holiday and Christmas parade, with, in particular, the Rotary Clubs and the Santa Maria Elks Lodge, doing the work that have made, made that parade at what it is and the benefit that it brings to our community. Also, we have a presentation of the outcome of the community meetings. As the council and the public knows, we've had four community meetings in four quadrants of the city, and we've received some good comments and feedback and input from residents there, and we want to bring forward to the council and the community as a whole what those were and how we're moving forward with them, to provide a snapshot of, so you can have an understanding of the information we heard in all four meetings. And then also, we'll have a standard of cover reports, or a similar report like this tonight for Recreation and Parks, but for the Fire Department, again, a snapshot of what services the Fire Department provides, and what future needs they may have as well. And so that'll be on January twenty-first. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Do you know where the meeting's gonna be, at the airport? Is it gonna be in the boardroom?
It'll be in the terminal, right in the main terminal.
In the main terminal?
Yeah, on the side, yes.
I'll fly in there for you.
Yeah.
And that's, that's Friday the tenth?
Friday the tenth.
At ten o'clock. In Building Ten. Okay, oral reports from council members. Ms. Soto, we start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything to report on, other than I would like to use my time to make a comment. I, I would like for us at the next council meeting, for there to be clarification as to how the meetings are supposed to be facilitated or ran. I notice that oftentimes, certain public comment speakers get more time allotted to them, and during council discussion, we often go back and continue to ask those in the public for clarifying, clarifying questions. And so I would just like a review to make sure that I understand the process as to how these meetings are supposed to be facilitated and the flow of it. And that also includes when, during, after a motion and a second was made, and when there's further discussion, I just want to make sure that I am not cut off during the final bit of discussion and just moving on to the vote. Thank you.
Ms. Soto, you are not cut off when you are recognized by me, but when you interrupt when somebody else is trying to talk, then I will cut you off. But I do not cut you off. There is a motion and a second, and then you can have discussion. And I, I bring it back for discussion many times after people have spoken. Ms. Tamora asked to show some slides. There's been times when a person asks at the podium that they want more time, and if I have a council member up here that asks for more time, I give them more time. And I've done that. So that's the way I do that.
I'm just asking for clarification.
Mr. Watson, is that correct?
Again, with respect to the motion and the second, then there is time for discussion at that point, but it is always recognition by chair.
Yes.
And it's the chair's discretion to extend and allow additional comments.
Ms. Waterfield?
I do not have anything to report, but I do want to make an announcement, and I believe, I hope all of you have received it. There's going to be the Santa Maria Police Awards luncheon on February the twelfth. It's going to be at the Elks Lodge, eleven-thirty, and the prize is twenty-six dollars a person. And you are more than willing to sponsor an officer as well for the same amount of money. So hopefully, everybody got that email. If not, let me know, please.
Dr. Moats?
Well, after, today after our last city council meeting, I went on the Ben Hayes Show to do my final summary, and I'm gonna take that baton and hand it off to Mr. Cordero, who will make his radio debut tomorrow.
I can't make it, I was gonna ask if you could fill in. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cordero?
On December the nineteenth, I attended the community meeting at St. Peter's Church that Mr. Stillwell was just talking about. It was a pretty good group there, and they had some, some good questions. I'm pleased overall with the, with the people that show up and ask the questions. I, I would like to encourage more people in the community as they listen to this and hear about it, to, to attend these meetings. We, we have these for them, for the community, for the constituents, to say what they have to say and address the questions that they may not be addressing, whether it has to do with their trash receptacles, or their, any other service that they provide at the city here. Parks and Rec is a good one for tonight. Yesterday, I was pleased to attend the Safe Place Ceremony out at the Maldonado Center. I thought, compliments to you, Mayor Patino, in making a great presentation. I would add to the comments that were made, and that is that it, it gives a, a young person an opportunity to, to reach out for themselves, no matter what their problem is. Their problem can be something that is generated by their, the, the young person's peer group, somebody at school, but also people at home, their neighbors, their others that might be abusing them in some way, or, or they need some clarification on it. And I think that it's a great program, and if we have anything to do with just one child a year, then we're certainly doing a job. I'd also like to take this opportunity to comment on the commissioners being here tonight. It's, it's great that we have these people to really focus in and bring us products that we can, can deal with. And, I mean, it's not only with the Parks and Rec Commission, but also with the Planning Commission. I guess structurally, we look at this and we would, we would assume that these commissions are subordinate to the city council, but the reality is, we all know that when, all the great work that's done by these commission, they're the ones that are really out there fine-tuning things, and they present it to us, and then we get to just hit the gavel and say, well, we like that, it's a great program. And we shouldn't forget the hard work that's done by these, by these commissioners. And it's, it's a rare opportunity that we get a chance to thank you very much for all of your efforts. And, and that extends, of course, to the Planning Commission as well, so. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. On December nineteenth, I attended SB CAG Board Meeting of Directors, and the afternoon, the APCD Board Meeting, and then that evening, the community meeting on the southwest quadrant of our city. On the twentieth, I was on the Rick Blaymeyer Show, and then attended the Central Coast Rescue Mission Christmas banquet at the Veterans Memorial Center. The Central Coast Rescue Mission serves so many people at, at a time, and, you know, during the Christmas season, and they did that at Thanksgiving also. Then on, and then yesterday, the National Safe Places Network Designation. And this is a national networking of, of designations throughout the United States. And I think it's so important that these kids know that there's a safe place for them to go, there's someone they can talk to, there are resources, there are other agencies and partners involved in this, so that we can handle the issues that need to be handled. This morning, I did the Ben Hayes Radio Show, and I think that's about it. Anything else from the dais? If not, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.